Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Hillsborough Township Planning Board Meeting of February 9th, 2023. Please join me in a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be advised this meeting has been duly advertised according to Section 5 of the Open Publics Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, otherwise known as the Sunshine Law. Notice of the 2023 Annual Meeting Schedule has been provided to the officially designated newspapers, the township clerk, posted on the township's website, and available here at the Hillsborough Township Municipal Complex. In addition, application documents have been made available on the township's Civic Clerk website, and complete application files are available in the Planning and Zoning Departments for inspection, for inspection in accordance with the public meeting notice. With that, may I have a roll call of planning board members and also board and township professionals, please?
Commissioner Chigarelli, Vice Chair Galian, Mr. Abstag, and Mr. Dovar, absent, Mr. Wagner.
Here.
Mr. Peason.
Present.
Mr. Scoboe.
Here.
Mr. Radowitz.
Here.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Mayor Lepani.
Here.
Chair Sarachi.
Here.
Mr. Boyce.
Present.
Bernstein.
Here.
Uh, Mr. Hoyt.
Here.
Uh, here you are. Not here.
Here, here. Good. Excellent. Okay, first up, we do have consideration of meeting minutes. We have the December 8th, 2022 meeting minutes. May I have a motion to approve, please?
The eligible members, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Wagner, Mr. Peason, Mr. Scoboe, Ms. Smith, the mayor, and yourself.
Thank you.
Motion approved, Mr. Chairman.
Second, and second was Mr. Scoboe.
Right.
Any comments from the dais? Hearing now, roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Scoboe?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Lepani?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes. Okay, we do not have considerations of resolutions, nor playing board business, and no consideration of ordinances, so we'll move from business from the floor, from matters not in this evening's agenda. Just please note, no comments regarding warehouses in general, because obviously we have an application tonight, and we have others in the pipeline. There will be playing opportunity to comment on each one of these applications during cross-examination, and also at the end of all testimony and cross-examination, when the public gets to have their say on the merits or disagreements with regards to said applications. So if anyone would like to come up, please state your name and address for the record, please. No? Stop right there.
No, no, no podium.
It's a, it's a safety hazard. I've already rendered that decision. The planning director understands there's not going to be any podiums like that.
Members, however, can, if they want to, sit at the-
Yes, you're more than welcome. You'd like to sit in one of these plush chairs.
That's very, that's compelling. I'll stand, I'm okay. Brian Tarantino, Fairfield Lane. So, at the November 10th Planning Board meeting, where we heard the application from Weston Road, we saw the, the board engineer act in a very biased way, and that was pretty shocking. At the December 7th, I forget what, was it December 7th Planning Board meeting, I made a comment, a public comment about that, and I also submitted written comments detailing what the concerns were. I'm hoping you guys read those comments, that they didn't get filed somewhere, but it really, and what, I'm bringing it up now because it really deserves some kind of response. If there is, even if there isn't any bias, if there's an appearance of bias, and an appearance of improprieties is just as bad as actual bias. And so, I don't mean to put you guys on the spot. You can tell me you guys are still considering it, and you will have some kind of response, but I'm asking for some kind of response because it's a very serious thing, and it really compromises the integrity of this whole process. If there's a, if there's the appearance that the, the engineer who's supposed to be representing the public is actually in, is acting in a favorable way towards the applicant. So, just asking if there could be some kind of a public response from you guys on that.
Sure. There was no bias.
Mr. Chairman, I think also for the record, it needs to be said that the board engineer represents the board.
Correct.
Not the public's engineer.
I was gonna-
The board's engineer.
Add that, so, yes, the professionals work for the, for the board.
Okay, but I was told that the board engineers, the, the board professionals are actually representing the public's interest. Mayor, I think you mentioned that in a previous comment, that I made.
The board represents, the attorneys represent the board when the, and the board represents the public, right? So, in, in a nutshell, we all are here to adjudicate a, a presentation, both pros and cons, of an application without bias, and then make the judgment based on the weights of detriment versus benefit, period. That's, that's the job of the board.
Okay. So you guys, you feel that, Chairman, you feel like that's enough of a response just to say-
All, all I'm gonna say again, no bias. I was there.
Yeah.
I've witnessed it. I've been to lots of planning board meetings. I have not seen any difference in the professionalism of any of our professionals, and, and quite frankly, yeah, I, I take it personally on their behalf, questioning their professionalism.
And their license.
I mean, I, I'm, I'm just reacting to what we saw publicly, the, the kind of comments, the kind of, you know, the, the kind of comments that, that Mr. Hay made. I don't mean to impugn the guy's reputation. I, you know, I'm an engineer myself, but, and so I, it was, I carefully considered it. I, it's a, it's a weighty matter. So, if that's what you guys think is enough of a response, just no. I, I'd appreciate it if there was some consideration of, or if there appeared to be some consideration of those, those concerns. So.
I guess I'm just kinda curious as to what exactly are you looking for?
Use the mic, please.
I guess I'm just kinda curious as to exactly what you're looking for. If he responded and said, no, he felt there was no bias, he, the engineer's answering in a professional capacity based on his experience as an engineer, I guess my question to you then is, what exactly are you, and I'm not trying, I'm not trying to be rude, just like, what exactly do you expect from him or from us?
Yeah, so that's-
What, what is gonna satisfy your request for our consideration of it?
So, I guess there were specific things that Mr. Hay did that would be, it would be valuable to the public to explain how they were not biased. So, for instance, saying when, when a board member raises a concern, and for the applicant to respond to, and the board engineer says, oh, I don't think that's a problem. I'll work with the applicant. We'll work together. We'll develop a response together. That was the, the nature, those were the kinds of things that Mr. Hay was saying. He, he continuously, in a number of occasions, discounted the concerns that were raised by a board member, not by someone from the public, not by, you know, but actually by a board member. And I don't think that's appropriate behavior. So, I would love it to hear, I, I think it would be, I think the public is owed some explanation of how that's not bias, how you can just make that kind of judgment. I, I'm not, you know, I understand that you've seen a lot, and you were there, but it would be appropriate, I think, to actually address the specific issues.
Thank you.
I'll take the cushy chairs.
Okay.
David Brook, Seven Winding Way. I would like to just follow up a little bit on what Mr. Tarantino said, because there is a concern with, with regards to appearances. And Ms. Smith asked one of the concerns. It wasn't even just the communication with the board. It was what is the role of the engineer and who are they counseling? Your counsel will tell you that the role of a professional is to provide guidance to all of you to make the best decisions. And as the chairman has indicated, this is a quasi-dutational proceeding. In quasi-dutational proceedings, your professionals, our professionals, do not spend time counseling applicants with regards to how they can get around the requirements that are all within the planning board's purview.
First, I'm gonna stop you there. No one's counseling anyone on how to get around anything. Proceed.
Again, it's the perception. When you have, the engineer's not here, but when you have an engineer telling the applicant, well, you can do this and you can do that, I would suggest it's not the role of our professional to advise their professional, and that's happened any number of different times during the different proceedings that have occurred. And so that's why I think we are concerned about that appearance. Maybe it's a matter of counseling the professional to suggest that if they have a thought on how the applicant can do it better, that it be directed either through counsel or through chair, because when you have that interaction, the appearance is not positive to all of us. Like, hey, whose side is he on? Is he on our side or is he on their side? And we know it's not-
Without a doubt, he is here to support the board.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Is here to support the board. Continue, please.
We all agree with that. It's that, it's that interaction that concerns all of us, the suggestion being, maybe it's time to talk too, and that's true with all professionals. Mr. Bernstein is not going to tell the applicant how to comply with the ordinance. He's going to say there are requirements within the ordinance, and you need to comply with them. From what I've heard of not just this one person, but some of the engineers, that's what they're not doing. They're telling the applicants how they can comply, and I don't think that's the proper role. One other question, no, I guess one other comment that I would like to bring up. It relates to free speech. And Chairman, from my understanding of your own rules, there is time limits, but I do not believe, and I do not agree, that any board member or the chair can dictate content during public portion. And I think that that needs to be corrected and/or addressed, because if I want to talk about a warehouse, if I want to talk about the weather, if I want to talk about the color of this room, public portion allows anyone to speak on subject matter that's not on the agenda. And if I want to talk about a warehouse that's not up tonight, other than the 279, then I should be free to do it, and I think everybody should be free to do it. To start putting limits on speech within this meeting, to my mind, is very dangerous and very inappropriate and not even legal. You do not have the authority to tell people what they can and cannot say during a public portion of a meeting.
I, I have the responsibility to conduct this board in a manner not to jeopardize applications and fairness, just like a, in, in a court of law, a judge can shut you down and throw you in jail. Now, I don't have that authority, but are you gonna tell a judge that they don't have the right to shut you down, throw you in jail, if you're in contempt? I mean, that's the same difference that you're trying to ensue here.
I, I would respectfully disagree. I, I don't think anybody is talking about contempt of yourselves or any of these members. What I'm suggesting to all of you is that you cannot tell the public what they can and cannot say.
Thirty seconds, please.
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
Thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds. So, I would suggest that all board members have a conversation with your attorney with regards to what you can regulate, certainly time, but not content. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so no additional comments from the public?
Maria Janusik, 720 East Freck Avenue, Mandeville, New Jersey. I'm also a Hillsborough Township property owner, Block 86, Lot 32155, Camplain Road. Listening to what was just talked about, I think there should be some clarification. So, the planning board is its separate own body, separate from Hillsborough?
No, it's, but it's separate from the Township Committee and any other board. So, the rules for the planning board may not be the same as the Township Committee, may not be the same as the zoning board, or the Environmental Commission, or anyone else.
So, when the new year starts, and the board is looking to hire the planning board attorney, it's the Township Committee that, or who, whose, whose responsibility is it to put out the, the, I forget what it's called?
The RFPs are put out by the Township, Township on behalf of the board. It is the board who reviews them and the board who makes the determination as to the hiring of the professionals, the engineer, the planner, the videographer, and even the stenographer.
I'm sorry. I, I didn't hear everything.
Township-
Videographer also for the planning board?
Yeah.
But it's the same videographer for the Township Committee?
Different contracts.
Doesn't have to be, doesn't have to be. It happens to be.
Okay, so separate, separate contract for the videographer, for the attorney, and for who else?
The engineer and the stenographer.
Okay.
And in some places, though not here, in Tillsborough, the planner, who is an in-house individual rather than an outside consultant.
Okay, so now, the, the contracts for these people are signed by someone from the planning board?
The chairman.
The chairman signs the, the contract, but the videographer is hired, this videographer is hired by the township, so-
By the planning board.
By the planning board, so that's, so, so, Mr. Sarachi signed all of that?
Should be.
All those contracts?
Yes.
So, the contract for Mr. Bernstein is signed by you?
Yes.
Okay, so now, who pays Mr. Bernstein, Attorney Bernstein?
Good question. I wonder sometimes.
Comes out of your pocket, right?
Yeah, the township pays me a certain amount of money to do non-escrow-related items. Generally, it is Mr. O'Grohanek and his various clients and all the other applicants who come before the board who pay for my services, the engineer's services, out of what is called an escrow account. So, only a very limited amount of money is paid directly to me by the township, per se, out of tax dollars.
So, then you and the engineer are paid by the applicant?
Uh, no, we're paid by the township from monies that the applicant pays to the township to an escrow account for that application, no different than any other planning or zoning board in the state of New Jersey.
So, okay, so, the township is the middleman for the payments that are made by the applicant to you and to the engineer?
Correct.
Okay, so basically, you're paid by the applicant. There's just the middleman-
Me and every other-
Middleman of the township.
Me and every other professional who serves in every other board, as I do for other boards, same way, unless the applicant fails to pay the escrow, and that becomes a whole nother problem, but not related to this.
Okay, but the bottom line is, the applicant, even though the township is the middleman, the applicant is paying you.
That's not the bottom line, no. But, but, the applicant is paying, the municipal land you swore provides for municipalities to establish what is known as an escrow account.
I understand.
Which is monies to be paid by the applicant to the municipality for the purposes of the payment of the professionals and related costs, so that the public at large is not paying for the applicant's use, not, but the board's use of our time regarding an application. The escrow account is paid to the municipality. The municipality monitors the escrow account to ensure that there are sufficient funds in the account to pay for the various bills. We submit our bill, at least my office submits our bills to the township. The township reviews the bills, reviews the escrow account, assuming there are adequate funds in there. The township, I believe, actually, the Township Committee on the bill list approves my payments for work here. So, I work for the board. That's how the payments are made.
So, the township doesn't pay anything to you? It's all out of that escrow account?
Township pays me for certain services that are not covered by, for example, the last 25 minutes are not being paid by Homestead 279 LLC, and until the public portion is done, I'll be billing the township out of the township monies from my services here tonight.
Okay, but anything applicant-related?
Comes out of the applicant's escrow.
So, so the applicant basically is, is paying-
Applicant is paying for the purposes of providing for the services, so the rest of you are not paying for them.
Okay, so the contract that you have, that Mr. Sarachi signed, whatever your hourly, is it done on an hourly basis?
Yes, it is.
So then you have to separate what was part of the application and what was part of what was going on-
Yes, I do.
On the, other than that?
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Okay.
So, okay.
Okay, we're, we're already at almost six minutes, so.
You have time.
I'm out of time?
Yes.
Thank you. As I spoke last time, I'm-
Name and address for the record, please.
I'm sorry?
Name, I'm sorry.
Deborah Lee Moore, 238 Amwell Road in Hillsborough. I had mentioned last time. I can't even think about pulling out of my driveway. I've got seniors along that road on Amwell. I've got the farm right across from where they want to build, senior house with adults right next to where they want to build, plus the peasants landing. There's gotta be other places that they can put warehouses. I can't, like I say, I can't even get out onto my road. It's so crazy, and no matter what time it is day, day or night.
Please refrain from talking about specific applications, or even-
Okay, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I totally understand everything, so.
No worries.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, see no one else, so we're gonna move on to the public portion. Eric, stop one. Clock and start the next one, please.
Got it.
Excellent. Okay, first up, Jennifer Priceon with file number 22-PB-S, with the time of decision to the end, or until the end of March. The applicant has requested to be adjourned to the March 2nd agenda of this year without further notice, and it's time of-
Need a resolution, Mr. Chairman.
What was that?
Resolution to carry.
Do we need-
Motion, pardon me.
Motion to carry.
Motion approved to carry.
Okay, the mayor made the motion?
Second.
Second was by Mr. Scoboe. Any additional comments from the dais? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Peason?
Yes.
Mr. Scoboe?
Yes.
Mr. Radowitz?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Lepani?
Yes.
Chair Sarachi?
Yes.
This is without further notice.
Okay, next is Homestead 279 LLC, file number 22-PB-05-S backslash S P V. Time of decision, June 30th of this year. The application's continued from the January 12th agenda of this year, for scheduling, well, that was for scheduling only with notice, and I'm not gonna go through it all. I'm just gonna turn it over.
Mr. Chairman, before Mr. O'Grohanek starts, I would like to indicate for the record that we have received from Mr. Radowitz and Mr. Wagner certifications of absent board member examination of record and eligibility to vote. Mr. Radowitz as to both the September 1 and the November 3, and Mr. Wagner as to the November 3, so both gentlemen are eligible to vote if necessary this evening.
Okay, thank you.
David.
Speranek.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Mike O'Grohanek. I'm an attorney at Savo Shaw Law Firm in Somerville. I'm here back on, on behalf of 279 Homestead Road. This is a minor subdivision and preliminary and, and final major site plan application to construct 137,413 square foot industrial building for a property located at the rear portion of Block 200.02, Lot 12, otherwise known as 279 Homestead Road. Property is located on the north side of Homestead Road in the LI, Light Industrial Zone District. Property is surrounded by industrial uses and has been so for many decades. Lark and Mini Storage is just to the northeast, Ehrlich Test Control, Strika Botanicals, Advanced Manufacturing, Dry Air Gas, Dry Ice, Gasket Ceiling and Solution. On the western edge, there's Hillsborough Urgent Care, and there's also another commercial use along 206. This is an application to, to subdivide Lot 12 into two lots. Lot 12 is, currently exists at 17.11 acres. Proposed Lot A with Strika Botanical would remain on 5.41 acres. That's the building that has several industrial uses that fronts along Homestead Road. Application, of course, proposes all the related improvements, stormwater management, parking, lighting, utilities, and landscaping. Procedurally, my partner, Mr. Fisher, was here on September 1, and he introduced Josh Tyner. Josh Tyner is our professional engineer from Redcom. He went through the then-existing conditions as well as the proposed site plan. Since that time, Mr. Tyner has essentially reviewed a myriad of comments from the, from Mr. Hay, the town, the board engineer, and made a series of changes to the plans, consistent with some of the technical comments related to the site plan application. We were here on, again, requesting an adjournment on November 4. At the September hearing, the board had asked the applicant to introduce our planning testimony as to the subdivision only, before we proceed to the remaining testimony of Mr. Tyner. I understand, after listening to the video today, that Mr. Tyner is, I would say, midway through his direct examination. He had gone through the site plan. He had not been cross-examined by the objector's attorney. He had not gone through all of the technical comments, and subsequent to the September 1 hearing, there was a second engineering review, so that hasn't been dealt with by Mr. Tyner. And tonight, we have, at the request of the board, we are intersplicing the planning testimony as to the subdivision. The, the current iteration of the subdivision does not front on a, on a public street, so that is, Mr. McDonough is our, has been retained as our professional planner. He submitted a report, I believe, on October 22nd in anticipation of that November hearing that was adjourned. And Mr. McDonough is here. He's in the hallway. He's on another Zoom call for another industrial use application, so when, when he's ready, we're gonna try to pull him in here and get the testimony. It's gonna, the outline, consistent with the new ordinance that requires a planning report, was submitted, you know, in October, so, and posted on Civic Clerk for many months. So, that's gonna be our first witness, if the board so pleases, and then we'll move on to Josh Tyner. He's a professional licensed engineer, as you'll hear. He is, he works for Redcom, and he has some exhibits related to the revisions to the plans that eliminates waivers and just essentially proactively addressed some of the comments from the board professionals and the board. We will also, in future meetings, have Gary Dean from Dolan &amp; Dean, who's our traffic engineer. We have Roberto Martinez. He's our architect. And, and we anticipate having operational testimony from Greg Reddington, who's the owner. He's the president and CEO of Redcom, as well as contract purchaser of the subject property from Strika Botanical, and he's going to submit a report on anticipated operations in anticipation of our next hearing. So, unless there's any questions, legal questions from me, we did renotice this hearing at the board's request, and I believe, unless there's any legal questions, we can move towards Mr. McDonough.
Just for the purpose of the record, I, I concur with most of Mr. O'Grohanek's summation of the last two meetings. The board may remember that during Mr. Tyner's testimony, that the issue came up as to the subdivision. It was at that point agreed to continue the matter to the November meeting.
subdivision, it was at that point agreed to continue the matter to the November meeting. Mr. McDonough was not available, and Mr. O'Grady made his request for the extension. There were some additional legal matters which resulted in opinion from my office, which has been circulated, and the discussion was that the board would at least review or take into account Mr. McDonough's testimony limited to the subdivision issue. The board would then potentially decide what it was going to do about the subdivision, or whether or not it was going to continue the application. Mr. Tyner was, I wouldn't say halfway through his testimony, but I'll leave that to Mr. O'Grady, et cetera, and definitely, I don't believe there was much of any cross-examination from any of the board, per se. There may have been questions during the discussion, but basically, we're in the usual spot about a, probably a little less than halfway through the applicant's engineer's direct testimony, obviously subject to the examination from the board, objectors counsel in the public, which, by the way, applies to Mr. McDonough as well. Good. And I see the objectors here are representation. So that table is for you, so you do not need to sit. So. State your names for the record, counsel.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Joseph Torriello, and I represent resident objector Sandra Inow.
Yep. Can we find the man who's double billing as we speak?
And you all talk about the lawyers.
So yeah, Mr. McDonough is on another Zoom call, so at some point, we're going to ask for a recess to let him go do his thing for his other application, but shouldn't be long, but he's good now, they're just getting into traffic, so he should be fine for our application.
Okay.
One of the other things that I wanted to mention while we're waiting for John is, you know, at the, at the November hearing, I had put on the record some of my concerns related to voting on subdivision prior to the end of the application. We would just reiterate that we feel that would be improper, we feel that would be a violation of the existing case law related to considering all the evidence. And basically, so this is a, we'll call a Section 35 planning variance for the lot not abutting a street, which is the focus of Mr. McDonough's testimony, and I just wanted to cite the law on that while we're waiting for Mr. McDonough.
Again?
Again, because I think it bears emphasis.
Just for the purposes of the record, counsel, can you, Mr. O'Grady made these comments at the November 3 meeting, they're on the record, they're in the transcript.
Yep, so I don't...
I'm filling time here, but I don't want to, I don't want to... He's here.
Okay.
But the door is locked. I'm not going to have to hear Mr. O'Grady discuss legal issues again, so, John. Thank you, John, for your timing was perfect.
You sure any testimony you get tonight is going to be the whole truth, the whole truth?
Yes, I do. For the record, can you state your name, please?
Sure. Hi, everyone, my name is John McDonough, that's spelled M-C-C-A-N-D-O-U-G-H. I'm the project planner.
Okay, and nothing's changed in your status, credentials, or licenses?
My planning license is current, is in good standing on both the state level and the national AICP level.
Okay, thank you. Do you want to give your credentials, Mr. McDonough, for the purpose of the record?
Sure. My education comes from Rutgers. Again, my license is in professional planning, license 5189, current and in good standing. I testify in this capacity throughout the state on a nightly basis. I've been here before, I've been in front of superior courts, and again, this is what I do. Also, AICP on the national level, and I'm a landscape architect, but I'm not testifying in that capacity this evening, I'm testifying as a planner.
Okay. Any objections? Okay, none? We accept, please proceed.
So we were asked, and Mr. Chairman, one, one thing I'll lead off with here, I'm up next on a Zoom, I may need a 10-minute recess when they call me. I know that's awkward.
We've been warned.
So, I was asked to do a planning analysis of the subdivision aspect, so I have limited testimony this evening, I know when all of the testimony is in, I'll come back and justify the various relief that the applicant is seeking here, but I know a question was raised at one of the prior hearings, specific to the subdivision aspect, and the fact that we have two lots being proposed here on what is now currently a single lot. Proposed Lot B is going to be the back of the property, Proposed Lot A will be the front of the property, and that will share, Lot B is going to share access with Proposed Lot A. I just realized, I have visuals for the board, I'm going to go grab them, and I'll be back in 30 seconds.
Locked it out again.
Yeah, it's going to take longer than 30 seconds, door's locked.
Don't give Eric any other ideas, we can start doing other meetings.
As you can tell, the public is watchful of our spending, so.
Where's my, where's my... Well, he's handing them out. You mean, when I get on the, when I get on the iCut?
Okay.
Mr. McDonough, just make sure you get very close to the mic, because it...
I will get right up to it.
Okay. We're going to mark this A1. It's A3. A3. Thank you, Michael.
It's entitled Planning Exhibits for Homestead.
So this is going to be a... Are you speaking to the mic, please?
Can you hear me back there?
Yeah, you can get right up again.
Okay, so this is going to be a six-part or six-page exhibit. We've submitted it at file size 11 by 17, and this is to give the board some context and orientation with respect to the site condition. The first page is a simple tax parcel map that's... John, before you continue, we're going to put two copies of this on the back table, folks. David. One copy. One copy here. One copy, and we forgot the chairman. It's okay, thank you.
Take it away, Eric.
Yeah, just pull the mic a little closer to you. New ones are on their way, don't...
Give him the remote, Mike. Eric, whatever my name is, David Myrick, just calling out of behavior, we'll be fine.
Is this better? Can everybody hear me okay? Okay. So we're talking about a single tax lot, block 198, lot 2.03, which has frontage on Homestead Road. You can see it is one of the largest, if not the largest, in the immediate area in terms of lot size. Second page is just an overlay of the tax parcel map, showing that the property is developed with an industrial building in the front and a large open area in the back, where we know by now that's where the proposed building is going. The subdivision in question will strike a line between the new and the old, and the reason why we're here for the relief, I'll get into momentarily. Third page shows the surrounding land use characteristic, and we've color-coded it in accordance with what's known as the MOD 4 Land Use Classification System. Everything you see in red is commercial, everything you see in gold or yellow is residential, and you can see we do have a finger of residential, but predominantly non-residential and industrial in this immediate area. And then finally...
Excuse me, can you go back to that? There's some, looks like, doesn't have any shading immediately adjoining the property.
Yes, that gray, for some reason, does not pick up on the legend, but that's industrial. Okay, and then you can also see there's agricultural land off to the left. The fourth page shows a zoning reflective of the established development pattern. Everything you see in gray is owned as part of your LI, Light Industrial District. Everything you see in green, light green and dark green is respectively the GA District, the Gateway A District, and the darker green is the Gateway B District. So the fifth page is going to sort of hover you over the subject property, and you can see from this particular vantage, we took a drone photograph of...
...and we have nothing, page 2, page 3, red one, this one, what are we talking about?
What was this submitted?
It's presented to everyone.
All right, hey, no shouting from the floor. Raise your hand, you're recognized, but I don't want this to start turning into everything. We've heard, there were a few copies provided.
When was this made available to the public? Because we haven't seen this.
No, no, no one's coming to the mic. No one's coming to the mic.
I'm here for a public hearing. I'm here for a public hearing. This should be above the board for everyone to see when you see a red one.
We're taking a recess. We're taking a recess. For disruption, recess. Okay, we're back in session, and I just want, just emphasize again, no shouting out from the floor. There would have been an opportunity to raise the question, if you really wanted to have seen it, and also the objector, the attorney for objector could have interrupted the proceedings if he had wanted to.
Well, I haven't.
I, well, okay, you might have to share it with everybody. So, the objector's attorney has, says he's got a copy, so he's willing to share.
And I represent one objective.
All right, all right, let's go.
Okay, so I'll, again, for our interested parties here, I'll just go through it again real quick. The exhibit on the screen, and what the board's been handed a hard copy of, has six pages. The first page is a simple tax parcel map that we use our GIS database, and it shows the subject property outlined in yellow, a single tax lot that has frontage on Homestead Road, and the visual here we tried to show, or what the plating of the land shows, is that this particular site is one of the largest, if not the largest, site in the immediate area. So there's good spatial capacity there for what our applicant is proposing. Second frame just shows the physical condition of the property and the surrounding land use context. We have an established industrial building in the front that is occupied, and then the back or the rear of the property is open land, and the development proposal before the board is to construct a new logistics facility in the rear, again, creating a subdivision line so that the business in the front, the building in the front would be retained, and the new development would take place in the back with an accessway that would take us out to Homestead Road through what we'll call Lot A in the front, or the existing development, and Lot B, the new lot that would be created off the back. Again, you can see in terms of the physical aspect of the area, we are looking at industrial lands, which would be to the east, if I'm looking at north being to the right, and then there are a variety of developed lands off to the, off to the west, and of course, developed lands to the north as well. And this third sheet is what we refer to as a color-coded MOD 4 Land Use Classification System. Again, this is taken from the state GIS database. Everything you see in red is non-residential land under the MOD 4 Land Use Classification, which actually ties back to the way properties are taxed, tax classification. We are seeing a residential property, which is the gold color or the yellow color. We have gray lands to the south, which, I'm sorry, to the east, which would be classified as industrial, and then this tannish-brownish color that you see off to the left-hand side of the page or to the south would be agricultural land, or what's classified as agricultural land. Fourth page, the zoning is reflective of the established neighborhood pattern. The subject property, along with those to the bottom of the page and to the left, are zoned as LI, Light Industrial, and then to the upper right-hand, the upper and the right-hand portion of the page, we're looking at what your gateway zones, Gateway B and Gateway, Gateway A. And then we were out there back in August, we took a shot of the subject property, and that existing building is this white roof building off to the right-hand portion of the photograph, and then the open lands that I talked about are centered in the middle of the photograph, and the proposal, again, is for a new building on this portion of the site, the open portion of the site, taking advantage of and using the accessway that's presently there for the existing building. And I did mention before, but I didn't mention this time, that there would be a subdivision line which would separate the two lands from a plating standpoint, but physically, they would be interconnected as one development entity. And this was a photograph that we had entered initially, this is just representative, the actual design, we haven't heard architecture yet, will evolve as we go, but this is just a representation of a new, modern logistic facility, which has certainly evolved from what we've seen in the past. They do have an aesthetic quality to them, many mimic what would be an office building, similar in look and scale. High-quality buildings attract high-quality tenants, and the applicant is trying to certainly do something good here in terms of the quality of the site. So with that said, we'll just sort of, I guess, take you back to the drone shot. While I go through the letter, we did issue a letter that was dated October 22, '22, and really what I'd like to do, Mr. Chairman, is just walk you through the nine points. We were asked to put together a planning rationale as to what would be the justifications for the proposed subdivision relief that the applicant is seeking. The relief we identified as Section 188-58B, which is the requirement that each lot must front on a public street. The minor subdivision is platted, again, such that Proposed Lot B, the new lot in the back would have access through the front portion of the property, which would be designated as Lot A, which does front on a public street. And so in terms of the justifications, we recognize that our land use law still does allow an applicant to have relief, that zoning is not meant to be frigid and inflexible, and just because an applicant asks for variance is not necessarily a reason to deny a variance, particularly if the application stacks up with the criteria that would be there for the relief. So here we give you nine reasons why we think this application does hit the statutory criteria, and we turn to the C2 balancing test, which is the newer test and somewhat unique to New Jersey. If I go outside of New Jersey, I pretty much only deal with the C1 test, which is the hardship test, and applicant would have to represent a practical difficulty related to the land. That's not the relief that we're using as the justification here. We're not looking at hardship or practical difficulty as the reason why I think this board can move favorably, but again, the newer standard, and the reason why I believe New Jersey is cutting edge, is we also offer another layer of relief, which is the balancing standard, where even though there may not be a hardship, per se, we look at the benefits of the application as a whole and weigh them against the potential impacts of granting the relief, in this case here, a subdivision line. And so, and we turn to the Pullen case, which, again, P-U-L-L-E-N, we cite the, cite the case, it's an appellate division case out of South Plainfield, and that's the one that says when the board deliberates, they should look at the application as a whole. That's going to tie back to some of the things that you'll hear down the road, of course, in terms of operations, in terms of the overall site layout, and I know this board has a, has a lot to consider as this application goes forward. So, reason number one, the project is going to deliver a permitted use. In and of that itself, that implies that the project, that the use does promote the public welfare. This is going to be a use that substantially complies with all of the bulk requirements in the LI zone. There's full compliance in terms of lot area. in the LI zone. There's full compliance in terms of lot area, lot width, lot depth, setbacks on all sides, including the front, sides and rear, the impervious coverage, the floor area, the building height, the buffering and the parking. So again, it's the first point that we want to make here, is that this is a permitted use that is in substantial conformance with the overall massing requirements in your zoning ordinance. Number two, we see a lot of these logistic facilities out in the public realm with, in our planning circles. The project is going to deliver what we consider to be a beneficial use on the government levels. We cite the Office of Emergency Services, Center for Disease Control, categorizing this land use as critical importance, up there with essential workers and important services in terms of providing for the supply chain with storage and timely delivery of goods, wares, products, supplies, and medicines. So, again, the nature of the use in and of itself is a good thing, and that's what our applicant is ready, willing, and able to do here. Number three, we talk about this land use as being an economic engine. There is certainly an unmet need, and it is a, in response to this burgeoning demand for e-commerce. I'm sure we all get the packages on by our front door when we come home, and that demand has certainly grown as it has become easier for online shopping. The statistics tell us that New Jersey is a logistic state, and that's based on this excellent infrastructure that we have here, access to the largest seaport on the East Coast, the excellent road transportation system that's been laid, and this is a land use that naturally follows those regional public amenities. And we just put some statistics in here. Nearly 12.2% of all the jobs located in New Jersey are in this, what I call TDL sector, Transportation, Distribution, Logistics sector. So it is important from an economic standpoint. That's the highest share among all of the 50 states, and together, those sectors are responsible for 15%, even more, of New Jersey's total payroll. We pointed out that, again, playing off of the critical infrastructure categorization during the pandemic, logistics workers were considered of such vital importance that they were exempted from stay-at-home orders, just like healthcare workers and essential workers. Our trucks had to keep rolling during the pandemic, and industrial workers had to go to work during that time. Reason number four, we look at some of the fundamental goals of planning. We always turn from the land to the land use law, and the reason why we're allowed to zone in the first place. The project, we say here, does advance the fundamental planning goal for a balanced land use supply and a stable ratable base. We talk about the responsibility of land use planners to provide for uses that are viable and that serve the public. I just gave you the reasons why the land use serves the public. We do say that the efficacy of this land use is unparalleled in today's economic climate. We know the occupancy rates of logistics buildings are at all-time high, getting above 97%, whereas office occupancy continues to plummet, again, due to remote work, the ease of Zoom and online workers as well. I always use the phrase, "We're now in a world where it's very easy for the world to come to you." You don't necessarily have to go out to the world, and because of that ease, that's why this land use has gained currency. Number five, the project promotes the planning goal to provide for the safe, efficient, and free flow of traffic and the location of transportation routes that prevent congestion. We talk about, again, this is where I talked about the access to the port, the importance of this location in New Jersey in terms of the greater, the greater good as well. We talk about from central Jersey, businesses can reach more than 98 million consumers within a two-hour drive. That's upwards of 33%, or one-third of the entire United States population within a one-day drive of this area. So it's an important hub, based on its central location and excellent accessibility to the regional transportation network. The shared driveway, we also talk about that as promoting safe and efficient circulation. One curb cut versus two, again, is a more efficient use of land. This is a site that conceivably, based on the zoning, could have multiple buildings on it and be just one lot. So the physical form of the development is essentially the same, whether it's one lot or two. We think the plating of land, which is really what this subdivision is about, is just a better plating of land if each building is situated on its own, on its own site. Number six, we talk about this as being a better zoning alternative for the property. That's really the essence of the C2 balancing test. As I say here, the property could be developed as a single lot with a single building or with multiple buildings. That's allowed here in the LI zone, and we see a much larger building as being potentially realized here. We think it's just a better zoning alternative to keep that building in the front. That's what's been familiar in the public eye, and then put the newer building in the back. So we think that maintaining the harmony that's there now with that building is better neighborhood harmony, and that was one of the findings of one of the C2 cases known as the Kaufman versus Planning Board case. Number seven, the project promotes a desirable visual environment with an attractive building. I'll fall back on one of those slides that I showed you again, which was illustrative or representative. We've got excellent buffering, excellent landscaping here. We have a, an applicant, again, that is not only ready, willing, and able to put together this development package, but put an emphasis on quality here and put something nice that does nicely integrate with the neighborhood and does respect your zoning. The building will be a Class A logistics distribution facility. It's an institutional grade. It will have visual appeal, very similar to newer office buildings, and certainly exceeds some of the aesthetics of the older suburban and office and industrial buildings with dated facades. And we come back to the fact that high-quality physical form attracts high-quality tenants, and that's what we're trying to do here. Number eight, the project promotes efficient land use with an infill development on a large tract of land. Development of this site is inevitable. We think infill development is favored by planners for its efficiency and as a deterrent to sprawl and the loss of dwindling open space on the fringe. The site is within a non-residential zone specifically intended for economic development and commerce, and again, this industry continues to evolve with innovation and automation that serves the public with more efficient and timely delivery of goods, products, and medicines. Lastly, we always turn to the purposes of the land use law under NJSA 4055D-2, and we give the board several purposes of zoning that could be hooked to a positive movement here, including Purpose A, the promotion of the general welfare for the reasons that I've just given. Purpose I, the promotion of a desirable visual environment, again, falling back on the aesthetic reasons that I've just given. Purpose G, to provide for a variety of uses in appropriate locations in order to meet the needs of all New Jersey citizens. Purpose H, the planning goal to provide for the free flow of traffic, and then of course, Purpose M, the planning goal to efficiently use our land with the overall goal of lessening the cost of construction, which always ends up falling on the lap of the consumer. So, all of those purposes of zoning are advanced here. We think all nine of those reasons are positives that the board can find under the balancing here. Comparing that weight with the negative impacts associated with striking what is essentially an invisible line, the form of development is not going to be any, any different, whether that line is there or not. The statute itself provides the criteria where the board may consider the negative criteria. We'll hear more testimony in this regard as we go, but we call it a planning variance. It comes directly from the statute under Section 35. I run into this a lot in my practice. The justification for Section 35 relief, having a lot that doesn't front on a public street, is in the very next section of the statute, Section 36, that requires a showing of, quote, "conditions that will provide adequate access for firefighting equipment, ambulances, and other emergency vehicles necessary for the protection of health and safety," unquote. So again, my letter states here that the applicant has demonstrated adequate access with turning templates on the plans. Obviously, as always, a board can impose reasonable conditions, restrictions to ensure that the subdivision has a rational, God bless you, has a rational nexus with the, with the site plan. So, again, that concludes what I put forth in writing, but we would like to move this into evidence now, and my planning conclusion is that on balancing, the benefits of the application substantially outweigh the detriments, and there's enough there for the board to move favorably on the minor subdivision aspect of this subdivision, of this application.
Thank you. I have no further questions for Mr. McDonough.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. McDonough, Mike?
My name is Joe Toriello, and I represent a resident who owns two residential properties that abut the subject premises.
Before you get in your rhythm, and I don't mean to be rude, I am, I am up.
Okay.
So I will be no more than 10 minutes, I promise.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I sincerely apologize.
It's okay. Stop one clock, start the other. Okay, so we'll recess till about 25 after. Are we, David? All right. And Mr. McDonough, remind you, you're still on the roof. Duly noted.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm just gonna start over again. It's okay. My name is Joe Toriello. I represent a resident who has two residential properties that abut the subject property of the application, notwithstanding your charts that show one residential property. You've indicated you testified before numerous boards before, in fact, you said on a nightly basis, correct?
For better or worse, yes.
And in fact, tonight, we witnessed you testifying before two boards in one single night, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, and you prepared your report dated October 22nd of 2022, correct?
Correct.
And you know, in your experience as testifying before boards, that you prepare a report because you know that the board is going to rely upon your report when it undertakes its deliberations with respect to an application. Fair statement?
Fair statement.
Okay, so you would also agree with me that it's important that when you prepare your materials for the board to rely upon, that you get it right. Fair statement?
Fair statement, yes.
Okay, and it's your goal to, and if you think something is important in connection with the application for the board to consider, you'll include that in your report. Fair statement?
Yes.
Okay. You indicate in your October 22nd report that the relief sought is in connection with Ordinance 18855B, correct?
Yes, that's, that's in the lots section of the ordinance, and it's a requirement that lots shall front on a public-
Okay, but you don't reference the MLUL Section 4055D-35 in your report as a relief request, do you?
Yeah. Yeah, I did, I did reference, maybe I misunderstood. I thought I was commenting solely on this subdivision and the relief on the municipal level.
Understand, but under the title section of your report, Identification of Relief, there's no reference to the MLUL, correct?
Under the, when you say the title section?
Yeah, on your report, the first page, October 22nd, you have a section that's entitled Identification of Relief in its underlying, correct?
Correct.
And underneath that, you indicate that your, that the relief is with respect to Ordinance 188-58B, correct?
Correct.
And there's no reference for additional relief under the MLUL, specifically the section that I just referenced to you.
That's a fact.
Okay. You indicate under point, before I get there, you, you reference Pullen versus Township of South Plainfield in your report, under the Justification of Relief section, correct?
Yes.
And you commented to the, to the board that you're relying on Pullen in support of this application. Is that a fair statement?
That's correct.
Okay. In Pullen, you would agree with me that the request before the board in Pullen did not result in a board granting a variance to create a non-conforming lot. That's a correct statement, isn't it?
I don't remember the fact pattern of Pullen, but I do remember the essence of the case. That's where the statement came out, that under the flexible CB, it gives, I think it gives the board, certainly gives me direction as a planner, that when considering the balancing, we consider the whole application.
Okay. Notwithstanding that comment, so it's your, it's your testimony before the board that you're not aware that in Pullen, the application did not result in a board approving a non-conforming lot. You're not aware of that.
I can't remember the fact pattern.
Okay. Would it also be important to know that both lots had street frontage in Pullen?
No.
Would that, did that, that sound important?
No.
Okay, because street frontage isn't important for you?
No, I didn't, did I say that?
I don't know. I'm asking you. I asked, would it be important? You said no, so I think you did say it. I'm trying to get clarification.
I did not say it.
And in this application, if the board approves this application, in essence, you will be taking a conforming lot and creating a non-conforming lot.
That is correct.
Okay. You indicated that the application, I want to make sure I get it right, so let me look at your report. I think it's in paragraph one. You indicate substantial conformance. Did I use your terms correctly?
Chair, you might want to move just a little back away from the mic you're getting.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Are you referring to my-
I'm referring to page one, point number one underneath your reference of Pullen. You say the project delivers a permitted use that is in substantial conformance.
Yes.
Okay. You where the original application sought 26 design waivers and nine variances?
The original application, the one I reviewed as, as part of that statement, was, again, what I said, substantially comply, fully complies in terms of lot area, lot width, lot depth, setbacks on all sides, coverage, floor area, building height, buffering, and parking. Those are our, our core bulk controls. I agree, we run into this a lot with this land use. Design-related controls are often not met. Landscaping, lighting, it's somewhat inherent to the use, but the overall bulk, the massive scale, stacks up very well with the ordinance.
Mr. McDonough, I'm going to ask you respectfully, just to answer my question. You've, you've given your direct testimony already. My question, and I'm going to repeat it again, is a very simple one. Above the qualifying language that you testified to regarding fully complies, my question dealt with your use of substantial conformance, and again, I'm going to ask you, you're making that statement with, in connection with an application, an initial application, that saw 26 design waivers and nine variances. That, in your opinion, that's substantial conformance?
Absolutely, yes. As a planner, I'm not supposed to count variances. It's not a quantitative analysis. It is a qualitative analysis. The number of variances don't matter.
With respect to the second page of your report, paragraph number four, you state, "The project advances the fundamental planning goal for a balanced land use supply and stable ratable base." Did I read that correctly?
You read it on point, yes.
Okay. Can you provide to this board either a statute, a case law, ordinance, published opinion, published third-party materials that support your referenced planning goal?
Oh, sure. That's a, that is a very common goal that we see in, in master plans. Planners use them all, all the time, to provide for a balanced land use supply and a stable ratable base. We see it in many economic elements, and it's a very, very common phrase used in planning vernacular.
Yeah, and it's a phrase you use in your report, but my question is, and again, I'm going to ask you, can you cite to a specific statute, ordinance, case, or published materials that support your statement? that support your statement? Not reference to generally. Specifically, can you cite to a statute, a case, or an ordinance that supports that statement?
Yes.
What is the statute, ordinance, or case?
Our state redevelopment and development plan, which is the cornerstone of all planning in New Jersey, the municipality's master plan, has to have a nexus with that document. And, I don't have the master plan in front of me, we're dealing with a permitted use. I would assume that that language is in there as well, because it's found in most master plans. It's a very common phrase. I didn't make it up.
No, but it's a common phrase you use in all of your reports, right?
I don't know what that means.
You also referenced Kaufman versus Planning Board in support of your opinion before this report, correct?
Yes.
Okay, and Kaufman, again, both properties had street frontage, correct?
That fact I do know, yes.
And, in fact, one of the properties was 65,000 square feet, and an ordinance that was 20,000 square feet that was being subdivided, so in essence, it was three times the permitted size in that ordinance, in that zone, correct?
I'll accept that, I don't remember the.
You have no reason to dispute that. Fair statement?
Dispute.
Okay. And, in fact, in Kaufman, there was a specific goal of the municipality to increase the intensity of use in that area, correct?
I don't know if that's true, again, essence.
You have no reason to dispute that, right? If it's in the opinion?
The reason this is in here is because Kaufman was the case that said two smaller buildings are better than one gigantic building.
Well, respectfully, you are grossly misstating what Kaufman stands for. What I'd like to do is submit Kaufman, and I'm not going to continue debating Kaufman. The opinion speaks for itself, and we will rely upon that in terms of the inaccuracies of the testimony that's been given tonight.
Is that gonna be considered Exhibit 01?
Yeah, let me plug it on the record. We will, obviously. This is Exhibit 01. It is a copy of a case decision, Richard and Laura Kaufman versus Planning Board for the Township of Warren, 110 New Jersey 551, decided June 21, 1988, for purposes of the record, when I cite the NJ, I am talking of the decision of the New Jersey Supreme Court. So, we will make copies from board and distribute. We will also place the case on civic clerk, Mr. Poise. Mark it as 01.
Yes, we will.
Mr. McDonough, you prepared tonight and presented some exhibits for the board's consideration.
Yes.
You called that earlier?
Yes.
And Exhibit 3, you have one property highlighted as residential in your exhibit.
Correct.
And you do not have, you do not have.
Mr. Toriello, I think we may be, play off the, I'm sorry.
I think it's 3. That's it. That's the one I'm referencing. Thank you.
This is page 3.
This is sheet.
Of A3.
And your exhibit indicates, if one was to rely on your exhibit, one would think there's one residential lot, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, but in fact, Lot 14 to the left is residential. Are you aware of that?
It may have residential on it, but, again, this is, we use the state MOD4 database under our GIS system, and this is what the state database is showing.
Okay, so you relied on one database, and you did no independent verification as to the accuracy of that database? Is that a fair statement?
Objection, you're misstating the record. The use is mixed use on that lot, the subject lot that you're referring to. There's a commercial landscaping business or contracting business on that?
It's residential zone. It's residential.
No, it isn't. I have no further questions.
Okay. Thank you. Board members, questions from the dais?
I'll just ask the question again. So, the lot in question may be a resident, is it an R-zone that you're saying, or is it a resident built on a commercial zone?
Is that for me, Ms. Mayor?
Your answer and his answer, how you interpret, I mean, it's.
Well, it's two uses on one lot.
But what is the zoning of the lot? Gateway B.
Ms. Mayor, it is Gateway B. I will say, the colors you see here are reflective of how the property is taxed. It is taxed as a non-residential lot.
Any other questions from the dais? Motion open to the public. Mr. Wagner moved it.
Second.
And Mr. Peace in second it, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, members of the public, you may come up and cross-examine Mr. McDonough on his testimony. And someone, no, it's up to you.
I'm happy to.
Okay, yeah, because we took the mic away.
Just give me like two seconds.
Why doesn't Mr. Toriello, Mr. Milik sit? You can stay.
Yep.
No, you, Toriello, sit.
Oh, you want me to sit? Yes or no?
Yes.
I don't want to sit here, okay.
Maria Janus, 6720 East Breck Avenue, Mandeville, New Jersey. So, current, hi. So, currently, this is one lot.
It is one single tax lot, correct?
And this lot has, can be accessed only in one area?
That is correct. Again, just pointing to the map that I have on the screen here, I'm just going to go to sheet number 2.
Of A3.
Of A3. And the road you see off to the left is Homestead Road. That's the only access point, access road on the sub.
And so, right now, it's a conforming lot, and what is being asked is to have it subdivided into two lots. What's the purpose of subdividing into two lots?
To, the asset is proposing a second building on the back portion of the property, the open portion of the property, and the subdivision line, I'm approximating with my cursor where it would strike, would keep each building situated on its own lot. So, if, I'll call it the back lot for ease of description, if that lot had access to a road, it would not need any relief as far as the subdivision is concerned. The lot size, the lot dimensions are all fully conforming with ordinance. The only reason we're here is because this back lot will have to get its access through the front lot in the form of an easement, of an access easement. And the law, the ordinance as well, the MLUL, the land use law here in New Jersey, and the municipal ordinance require that any created lot front on a public street, and the applicant is asking the board to move on the creation of a lot that does not front on a public street.
Okay, all right, so that's the purpose, is to be able to get to the back there?
That's correct. And what I tried to put forth was one driveway among these two buildings acts almost like an industrial park would act, would act. From a physical planning standpoint, it makes good planning sense, because there's only one, I'll say, conflict point with the roadway, one access point with the roadway, as opposed to two separate access points.
Okay, so that eliminates having to get a, what is it, waiver variance, variance for not having, not having access that back, for that back area? That eliminates that, but now, do you have to apply for something to now have a non-conforming lot?
Well, that's the reason why I think I got called to the stand, is to give the board reasons why, I think, in my professional opinion, there's enough there for the board to move favorably on that ask.
So, then, once it's divided, both lots would be non-conforming?
No, only the, only the back lot would be non-conforming. The front lot would still be fully conforming in terms of dimension and in terms of access. It would front on a public street. So, it's only the creation of this back lot that needs the relief.
Okay, and what, so it would be non-conforming for what reason?
Because if you picture a box, which would create the lot, that lot does not touch, directly touch or front upon a street.
Wow.
That's the requirement. Every single lot in the municipality is supposed to touch a street, have direct access to the street.
Okay, so that's.
This lot will have access to the street, but through another lot.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Susan Gallowford, Hunt Club Road. Presently, that entire property is owned by Mr. McNally, or not?
I don't know the owner's name or the entity, I'm sure it's in the file records.
Okay. In your comments, did you mention that if, if one person owned it, for example, and decided to put several small, commercial, industrial, whatever term you used, buildings in the back, that would have been a good use, so to speak, without going through no frontage and stuff?
I'll clarify that question, that answer, and again, it goes towards the second sheet, the aerial photograph of A3. In my view, the ordinance does have a provision in this particular zone that would allow for multiple buildings on one piece of property. So, some people don't like when I say this, but it's an invisible lot line. You don't see it in the physical world. The development, the form of development would be the same whether that lot line is there or not. It's really, I think, more legal, financial, perhaps, in terms of having each building situated on its own lot, but from a physical planning standpoint, development is gonna operate the same either way.
It just eliminates the legal question.
Yes, yes.
To a certain extent. I saw the shrug. Now, Stryker will also not have an imperious coverage problem with this division?
I better stay in my zone.
Stay in your zone, okay.
Again, the physical aspect of the development, the site plan aspect, which you'll hear more of, is going to be the same either way.
Okay, now, did the applicant offer to purchase a strip of land from Stryker Botanica that would have given them access to the road?
I don't know. I don't know.
Okay, I was going to ask, did Stryker say no on that, and why? But apparently, somebody else will have to answer that question.
Right, I'm only looking at the application that's before me. I don't know what went on around it.
Okay, you said infill development is a plus for planning? Is that what you called it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Are landlocked lots considered good planning?
Landlocked lots are considered good planning if they hit the criteria, which, again, no one wants to create a lot that does, that creates an unsafe condition, that does not provide for adequate access. And we'll, we'll hear testimony about this, but you'll hear it through several witnesses, that there is going to be safe and efficient access for emergency vehicles to get to the back of that lot, notwithstanding the subdivision line. There's not going to be a fence associated with that line.
Okay, we'll get back to the question of whether Stryker thought it was not a good idea to have them buy that property, as opposed to the applicant having an easement. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, in your opinion, why does the municipal land use law require road frontage for every lot?
Again, safety, access, but if an applicant can prove that safety and access are adequate, notwithstanding the lack of frontage, it passes the test.
So, it was important enough to have it not only in the municipal land use law, but also in Hillsborough's ordinance to say that you have to have road frontage?
Yes, it is important, yes.
And I noticed that, I listened to all of your reasons for why it would be okay, and they, you know, this warehouse is gonna look so great, and it's gonna be really great for the public and all that. I guess my question is, I didn't see you talk, I didn't find, and I did read your document, anything where you addressed the actual issue, which is, how would you overcome the rationale for needing road frontage? How would you, you know, because the municipal land use law could just as easily have said, you either need road frontage, or you need permission to drive through somebody else's property, but they didn't say that. They didn't say that that was okay. You're saying it's okay, I guess, but you didn't really address that in your letter. What would you say about that?
There's two parts to any analysis. Number one, the statute certainly establishes the criteria, that the law favors lots that front on a public street. That's Section 35 of the law.
The law favors it, or requires it?
Okay, the law requires it.
Okay.
But, the law does not foreclose the opportunity to create a lot that does not front on the street.
Sure, you could build anything anywhere, right? I mean, as long as you get the permission for it.
All I'm saying, much like a variance, there are criteria for granting of variances. There are criteria for granting a Section 35, Section 36 relief for a lot that doesn't front on a public street. So, all I'm saying is, I reviewed the relief, I reviewed the criteria for relief, and this application stacks up.
So, what I noticed, though, my actual point is, I noticed that none of your reasons actually address the issue of having road access. It didn't actually address any of the concerns that would come up for a lot to not have road, lot access. I mean, you talk about how beautiful the building is gonna be, and we're gonna get these high-quality tenants, and, you know, gee, there's real demand for warehouses, so, you know, this is gonna be really beneficial, but none of those reasons actually address the actual issue, which is, the lot, once you guys are done with it, will be a non-conforming lot that will not have access to the road.
That's a fact, there's no doubt about it, but, again, the criteria for relief are safe and efficient access for emergency vehicles to that lot that does not front on a street, and I have not heard anything on the record, or seen anything on the record that would indicate otherwise, that the applicant is, applicant is providing safe and efficient circulation for emergency vehicles to the back. That's the criteria.
So, it's just about, it's just about emergency vehicles. It's not about that this is a warehouse that requires loads of trucks going in and out every day, and having to go through someone else's property. I'm just, you know.
Let him answer the question.
Okay, sorry.
Again, counsel asked me a similar question about Section 35 in the statute, and I put at the, at the end of my report, that the criteria are set forth in Section 36, and I'll read the quote again, requiring a showing of, quote, "conditions that will provide adequate access for firefighting equipment, ambulances, and other emergency vehicles necessary for the protection of health and safety," unquote.
Is that specifically about logistics facilities?
No.
Okay, so, this is specifically a warehouse, right?
Yes.
And so, there's, so, it's not just gonna need ambulances, it's gonna need trucks too, right, to access?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. And I didn't see that you addressed that at all.
Mr. Tarantino, that's, that's a question for the civil engineer, uh, in part, the traffic engineer, and for fire issues, in part, with the architect.
I would respectfully disagree. We're talking about reasons why you presented, uh, you read them and elaborated on nine reasons why it should be okay for this lot to be non-conforming and not have road access. We didn't talk about, we haven't, we haven't started talking about traffic yet. We know, we don't know the volume of traffic, but we do know there will be trucks. And so, they will have to reach the, the road. And I'm just asking, because I wanted to make sure I wasn't missing it, that you, if you actually addressed anywhere in your report, anything to do with ensuring access for trucks through someone else's property?
Mr. Tarantino, that question is not appropriate before the planner.
Mr. O'Grady, if Mr. McDonough can answer the question, he can. If he can, he obviously can respond accordingly.
On a, certainly on a general level, from a planning standpoint, what the applicant is doing is not atypical of any industrial park, where one building may be behind another building, and trucks go from one building to the next building to get out to the road.
Through someone else's property, you're saying? That it's common that, that a, a building will not have road frontage and have to, and have to have all of their trucks go through someone else's property? You're saying that's common?
I'm saying that is something that we see in industrial parks.
You're saying that's common?
Sure. Yes.
Oh, okay. Where else is it? Like, where in Hillsborough is that?
I don't know.
Where in Somerset County is that?
Uh, I can certainly give you examples of industrial parks that have lots that don't front on a public street. There, there are, um, another example are, are malls. Our shopping malls are not one lot. Their, Macy's may have its own lot, Sears may have its own lot.
And there's a warehouse in the middle of the mall?
I'm just giving you a land use comparison, that industrial parks, shopping centers, regional malls, it's a very common, uh, land use technique. Uh, it facilitates, uh, financing-
And I'm, I'm sorry. I, I'm, I'm actually asking you by-
Mr. Tarantino, let him finish his answer.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
What I'm saying is, uh, the carving up of industrial parks, planned industrial developments, planned commercial developments, it could be an office complex, it could be a shopping complex, it can be an industrial complex. Carving up large pieces of land into individual parcels that don't front on a public street is not atypical. It's not, it's not unusual, what the applicant is doing here.
My specific question was, are, it, did you address that in your report?
No. I didn't, I didn't-
Okay.
I raised whether, what the applicant, I, I raised particularly that it meets the criteria of section 36.
Good evening.
Hi.
Hi. Uh, Thuy Anh Le, Ivy Lane, Hillsborough.
Would you like to spell your name, ma'am, for the record, please?
Sure.
Thank you.
Good. Um, so one of the beneficial uses that you pointed out, I think it was number two, was that the warehouse could be used for the Office of Emergency Management, or for-
I'm sorry if I went fast.
OEM?
No. I, that's not what I said. I'll clarify.
Okay.
Um, I probably went a little fast.
Okay.
Uh, that was bullet point-
Two.
Number two. And what I said, I said, "The project delivers a beneficial use." I didn't say we would fill it up with the Office of Emergency Services, but what I, or Emergency Management. What I said is, the Office of Emergency Management, that comes out of Homeland Security, and the Center for Disease Control, um, another, another governmental branch, categorize it as, quote-unquote, "critical infrastructure." And I think there are 16 sectors that, uh, that those agencies classify as, of, uh, critical infrastructure. Essential services, our utilities, medical, uh, those are the-
Yeah, I understand. So are you saying that the warehouse, you would be trying to attract that kind of, um, you know?
But basically, what I'm saying is, the, the land use is important, because it delivers products to the public. Uh, we know with e-commerce, we know with, um, the logistics supply change, there's peaks and valleys.
Right.
Boats are stuck out in the, in the ocean outside the ports. These facilities provide an opportunity to have product readily available, to get it out to the, to the public. So it smoothes out those peaks and valleys, and that's why it's an important land use, to have those products, services, of medicines, wares, there for the public when they want it.
But if you don't know who will be, you know, occupying that space, how would, I, I don't know the validity of stating that as a beneficial use. If you don't know who, who will be, you know, inhabiting that space.
Well, again, we don't know the specific end user, but it will be products, wares, supplies, medicines, of that broad category.
Broad category. Okay.
Yes.
And when you, there was also something else. You said, um, that the two lots would be, like, physically interconnected. Could you clarify that?
Sure. Um, I should have had the, the plan ready, but again, I think it's easy enough to visualize on sheet number two of exhibit A3. The white-roofed building is the building that will stay as part of the development. And in this field in the back is where the new building would go. And if you could visualize just a connector road that would serve both facilities. So they would both be physically integrated as one, in terms of circulation and access.
So that means you need approval of the first segment of, you know, that access?
Yes. To create this lot, the applicant is asking the board for, um, approval to create that lot. And that, that back lot does require the relief that we're, we're asking for. What I'm saying is, regardless of whether the subdivision is there or not, the zoning still allows another building on the property, or one big building on the property, that can function as, as one. And by functioning as one, I don't mean having necessarily the same businesses in them, or even, could be different, uh, ownership entities. One could be in the back, in the form of an easement. All I'm saying is, physically, they could be interconnected. Two boxes, two buildings, one roadway, whether the subdivision is there or not. Okay? So either way, you get physically the same thing. I think it's just a better plating of land to have that subdivision there, than each building has, uh, more control on its own lot.
Bill Martin, Hillsborough Road. Uh, can you tell me, are industrial parks in allowed use in the LI district?
Um, I would have to go back and check my notes, uh, for sure. I don't, I'd have to go back and check.
Can we find out? Does the zoning officer know?
Not for the zoning officer to testify, though.
Is there a point you're trying to get at?
Well, yeah. He said to Mr. Tarantino that this is basically an industrial park when this is done this way, with a shared driveway.
But this, uh, Mr. McNally, are you talking, referring to this as an industrial park?
I was not referring to this as an industrial park. But I'm saying it's not atypical for planned industrial developments that have multiple buildings on them, to, to have lot lines that divide the buildings.
Okay. I heard you say industrial park. That's why I was asking. I thought that would be CDZ, not LI.
And I'll, I'll accept what you're saying. The applicant is not asking the board to move on a non-permitted use here.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
The light's right there. In fact, you could go, stay right there.
Testing?
Nope. The green light's good.
Okay. My, my question-
Name. Name and address.
Cardinal Meyer, 266 Fairfield Lane. And my question is, I think you're calling it the Stryker building there, the white one in the corner? So what is currently there next to it? Is that a old parking lot, or roadway already?
Uh, yeah, you talking on the, on the, uh-
To that white building?
Again, for orientation purposes, I'm going to say north is to the right, so to the top would be, to the west is a parking field.
So, so that is parking lot right now, with paved surface?
It is paved surface, yes. Uh, surface, I believe, to the edge, right to the edge of the land.
Okay. So, so what I'm wondering is, now, you're proposing doing a subdivision there, so split the lot. How does that affect impervious surface coverage, if somebody could answer that? That would seem to me that the front lot then would not be, um, comply to regulations regarding that?
I don't recall that being the relief that the applicant was seeking. I had, I'd have to go back to my, my list. I don't believe that the subdivision line is creating an impervious coverage issue on the front lot.
If, if it's all buildings and parking lots, I don't see how that would not be pretty much close to 100% impervious.
I mean, when we get back to the engineer, they'll be able to address that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Sure. Okay. Well, I wait for other takers. I've got a question with point number five, because it's the one area that you do specifically talk about, Hillsborough. Um, it's the second to last sentence where you state Hillsborough is poised to capitalize on its growth by virtue of its central location and excellent accessibility to the regional transportation network. Can you define regional transportation network? And then, part two, why you feel our accessibility is excellent?
Well, because you're, you're, you're right here, uh, proximate to the ports, proximate to the Turnpike, 78, 287, uh, those roadway systems. Site itself is proximate to, to, uh, 202, 206, which has connectivity to those arterial roadways. And both the good and the bad of New Jersey is its densification. Those roads are just by virtue of the size of New Jersey, um, within reasonable proximity to provide for excellent accessibility to the regional road network. So those systems are there. Turnpike runs right through the center of New Jersey, and, and then you've got our east-west routes as well, uh, that connect those ports to the rest of the world.
I guess, how do you define its excellent accessibility? Is it a proximity, time?
Uh, just by virtue of the fact that those major roadways are, uh, nearby.
Define nearby?
Within a half hour.
So if you're 30-minute travel of one of those major roads, it's-
Yes.
It's considered excellent accessibility?
That's my answer.
Okay. Is there supporting any type of reference material that provides that as a definition of accessibility, or excellent accessibility, or is that your opinion? 30-minute drive is reasonable?
That's, that's an opinion now. I think I better, uh, leave that to the traffic engineer to expound upon that.
Well, so is he a co-author of this, your memo, then?
No. But my planning conclusions are certainly going to rely on the predicate of the witnesses who usually come before me, but in this case, will come after me. So I'll certainly reserve the right, if our traffic expert concludes that there is not excellent accessibility here, to, to come back and either strike that, or, or refine it for the record.
Okay. I don't see any other takers.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough, for purpose of the record, how close is this proposed site to Route 287?
It's okay if I pull it up on the screen here, on, on my-
I might let you get away with it this time, but... And not as the crow flies. Six. Miles. Five. Six. Miles. We've heard a time definition. I'm looking for miles. And while you're looking at that, Mr. McDonough, the same question regarding 78, Interstate 78, and the New Jersey Turnpike.
I'll qualify this by saying I'm relying on, can I say Dr. Google here? Uh... It's showing approximately seven miles as I drive down 206 to the intersection with 202, and then 287. So, and then the next one, I think, was the Turnpike?
78.
78 would be another...
And the Turnpike.
All right. Before we go to Turnpike, so for 287, that's northbound. What would be the equivalent for southbound? Because you don't get to southbound in the same direction.
Me clear, Mike?
So, we would ask that we just punt on these distances. I think they're, the question of proximity of the site to major interstates is, in my view, a, a traffic question, but we can certainly-
I would, uh, if it's in his planning report, he's got to substantiate it.
Then we'll-
I'm looking for a definition. He just gave a qualitative description. I'd like quantitative.
Well, then we'd like to make more certain measurements and, and resupplement when closing testimony on planning, uh, is at the end of the proceedings. We can give you estimates, it's, but I think we want to be accurate.
We'd, we'd ask that Mr. McDonough provide the information at least 10 days in advance of his finding of his testimony in terms-
Sure.
Mr. McDonough, just to confirm what I believe is your prior testimony, you have no idea at this time who may or may not occupy this proposed building?
Correct.
And that you've not been provided such information. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And your report is based on hypothetical, in terms of the potential use of the site, and your testimony as well. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. May I ask for a short recess, Mr. Chairman?
Sure. Well, we need five for 10 minutes.
Five.
Okay. We're recessed. It's 9:20. We'll reconvene in five minutes at 9:25. Okay, we're back in session. Do I need to formally close?
No. But he's asked a question. Is anyone else? Does anyone else have any questions of Mr. McDonough?
Sorry, I can- I promise I'll be brief.
You know, can be as long as you want. Yep.
Uh, John?
You're good.
Am I good now?
Yeah.
Am I doing? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
John Lanin, uh, reported from Long Island Way. Just real quick, you testified about warehousing, and the need and the demand for warehousing, and I noticed it's in the report for, I believe, in the letter. Sorry.
We can give you estimates, it's, but I think we want to be accurate.
We'd ask that Mr. McDonough provide the information at least 10 days in advance of his finding of his testimony.
In terms...
Mr. McDonough, just to confirm what I believe is your prior testimony, you have no idea at this time who may or may not occupy this proposed building?
Correct.
And that you've not been provided such information. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And your report is based on hypothetical in terms of the potential use of the site and your testimony as well. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. May I ask for a short recess, Mr. Chairman?
Sure. Well, we need five for 10 minutes.
Five.
Okay, we're recessed. It's 9:20. We'll reconvene in five minutes and 9:25. Okay, we're back in session. Do I need to formally close?
No, but just ask a question. Does anyone else? Does anyone else have any questions of Mr. McDonough? Sorry, I can't...
I promise I'll be brief.
You know, it can be as long as you want.
Uh, John? You're good.
You're good.
Am I good now? Yeah. Am I doing? Can you hear me? Yeah. John Lanahan, Ford, Winding Way. Just real quick. You testified about warehousing and the need and the demand for warehousing. And I noticed it's in the report for, I believe, the letter. Sorry.
Yes, I talked about the efficacy of this land use in today's world.
Great. So you quoted, I think it was 90-something percent occupancy or demand?
Yes.
Can I ask where you got that, that source?
I can provide it.
Great. Are you familiar with the page report from the Fed Reserve for January?
Can you tell me, can you say...
The Fed Reserve for New York. They give the page report or the Fed Reserve Bank. So they report in there that the warehousing space, commercial space, is cooling off. Has supply chains, right, start those issues that we all lived through three years, ease up? Now we don't need as much warehouse and storage space. When you drive down 206, I don't know how you came tonight. Are you familiar where Docking Park is when you go down 206, south from the circle, just before the railroad trestle? To your right, there's a huge warehouse space, about 250,000 square feet.
When I come to the circle, it's to the right.
Yeah, when you come on 206, it used to be, um, the, the betting place, one of your favorites, the restaurant.
He got to testify.
Anyway, there's a big John warehouse there, where the fire was a few years ago, made the news. There's a big sign that says 250,000 square feet are available. There's another report. Are you familiar with Commercial Real Estate Edge? They're one of these industry rags. They're also reporting that warehousing, the need for it, is cooling down. So I'm just curious as to when you were looking at those statistics, did you see anything that showed that the market is cooling off now with the rising interest rates, people pulling back? Supply lanes have eased, uh, supply chains have eased up? Did you see anything like that in any of your research?
I, I have not, no.
Yeah, I would love to see the, the 92-point, whatever it was, background. That'd be great. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So I did have an opportunity to speak with my client in the, in the recess. And I do believe that if, if the township planner and engineer and board, for that matter, prefers a flag lot, we can, we can design it. Now, again, we'd have to redesign the, the plan. But it seems to be, as I listened to Mr. Hay and Mr. Maskey's testimony at the September 1st hearing, they seemed to insinuate that that would be a preferred planning resolution. And we've spoken with the owner, and we would, again, we'd have to, again, revise the plans. But we, I would defer to the professionals. If that would be a preferred site plan design, then that's something we can accommodate.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure it's necessarily appropriate for either the board planner, the board engineer to comment on what would be, quote, "more appropriate than the other." I think it is within the board's purview if Mr. O'Grady, Nick's client, wants to submit a revised site plan for the project in question, they are more than welcome to do so. And obviously, we ostensibly start from scratch.
I would adamantly disagree that it is inappropriate for the planner and the engineer to give advice to the board on a preferred design. That happens every single application in every town in New Jersey. We're getting no feedback from the board professionals. And if, if we can accommodate a reasonable change, we'll do it. It will cost substantial sums of money to redesign the site plan. It will create all different, we're going to have to completely redo our bulk standards. But it's certainly something that we can accomplish if that's what the board wants.
My concern is that preference is perceived as approval. And I won't, I'll use the word for a while. It, it, it may not necessarily be appropriate, but it's a word we've been admonished that the concern is who we are, quote, "representing," closed quote. I think it's, it may not be inappropriate for the board professionals to review a proposed site plan and make comments accordingly regarding the same. But I don't think it is necessarily appropriate. I don't disagree with Mr. O'Grady that it's done doesn't mean it's right. That the board professionals, in, in absention without something to look at, will say, "Oh, yes, we find this more," like my words, "palatable" than something else. It's the applicant's application. It works before the board and the board professionals now. That's their call, whether they want to go forward with this application or they want to amend the application accordingly. But I don't think it's necessarily appropriate for the board professionals to be asked in a vacuum whether they find a proposed flag lot to be more acceptable than this application.
I would tend to agree, because they would not know what's on the mind of the planning board members individually as to what their preference is. So I think that is going to be your client's call, which way you want to, if you want to continue with this or come up with an alternative and get, and present something to, for some comment or feedback.
I would just say, obviously, when you presented this application, Mr. O'Grady, you had the opportunity to do either, and you chose the one that you chose and present to the board. I don't know why you, and I'm not asking you for the record why you did, but there, there was an option from the beginning to do it that way without having to come for a variance, I'm assuming is the option that you would have had. But that is, that is your client's prerogative to choose the application that he wants to present to the board.
Yeah, but, well, first of all, I would ask Mr. Coys, are flag lots permitted in the I-2 zone? And if they're not, then that would be different relief. But it, it would be very unusual if the board and the board professionals would not entertain options for design, for site plan design.
I don't think anyone, Mr. O'Grady, is suggesting the board and the board professionals will not consider. What you seem to be looking for is the board professionals to go on record as indicating whether or not one application is better than another application, especially when there's only one before the board and one is in a vacuum. I think the question you raised from Mr. Coys is up to Mr. Coys as to whether he wants to answer as to whether in this zone, a flag lot is potentially permissible.
You can answer that, man? Okay.
I would like to cite 18849 flag lots.
You might want to, you might want to make it a little bigger. You might want to make it a little bigger so you can see it.
Yeah.
Bryce is getting, getting to where those who need them.
Sorry. Some shortcomings with site.
Yeah.
So, thank you. Okay, thank you. Section 18849 of the Hillsborough Development Regulations Ordinance, it states, "Flag lots may be selectively approved in MZ, AG, RA, RS, R, R1, CR, TC, and PD districts as a means of gaining access to the rear of lots or to portions of tracks having difficult means of access. Recognizing that flag lots are allowed as an exception rather than the rule and that the creation of flag lots add development without accompanying street system, the following conditions shall be required." Without going further, essentially, there, there is no standard for an LI district to allow for flag lots.
Okay.
So would it be a bulk variance?
I would have to evaluate that. I would have to evaluate that.
Well, I'm, one option is that we can give the board options. I think it would be a very sad day if this board does not, that their professionals and the board members do not give applicants advice on perhaps changes to site plans. And I don't believe that that's what occurs generally. There's been surprisingly little comment when these warehouse applications are pending from the board professionals. And I don't believe that's historically how the board operates.
Mr. Chairman? May I suggest that if that is what Mr. O'Grady is seeking, and if that is what the board is seeking, that Mr. Hoyt and Mr. Coys provide written opinions as to the issue of the applicability of flag lots in general in this district. At that point, it's up to, depending on that issue, what Mr. O'Grady wishes then to do relative to that opinion.
Can I add one more request to that? This can also be done with an option for no subdivision. And two buildings, which as we determined earlier are permitted in this zone, and just have no subdivision, and we'll just do an HOA, and it, it doesn't have to be subdivided.
Mr. O'Grady, I'd ask you to reduce that to writing, just so there's a confirmation, and make sure that we'll put it up on civic board. Mr. Torriello? Any comments?
I...
My profound... Sorry.
I'm sure I will have comments at some point, not at the moment.
Since we're now going down that road, I have one, I have one other point. Unrelated, but related. It is my understanding that Mr. Torriello is intending to call Mr. Milik in opposition to Mr. McDonough's testimony. Is that correct, sir?
That is correct.
Mr. Mr. Milik gets to be held to the same standard Mr. McDonough is held to, which means prior to any testimony he gives, he needs to provide at least 10 days in advance of his testimony a proposed report for review by applicant and the board.
He did submit a report. It is, it is up on the, yeah. But if you're talking about in the future, I understand, yes.
And Mr. McDonough hopefully has copies. So I'm just reminding everybody that we all have our various reports, so...
However... Because I get to set time limits and all.
Our, our change time, I mean, we won't let any more testimony after 10. It used to be 10, 10:30.
9:30. No new testimony now.
Passed, yes. You're correct.
Because we, we have a hard stop at 10, and no new testimony after 9:30.
So, based on all of that, I'm assuming that depending on what Mr. O'Grady does or does not wish to do relative to his client's application, this matter is going to go on to March the 9th, I believe. And that the first order of business will be Mr. Milik's testimony on Mr. McDonough's report and his own. Whether you wish to bring Mr. McDonough, he can squeeze it in.
I think we would like to wrap up with planning at the end, after all the other witnesses, and reserve the right for Mr. McDonough to respond to points raised by Mr. Milik at that time.
That makes an assumption that the board is going to not take an action regarding the application prior to the end of the application, so...
Well...
I'm just, Michael, I'm just advising you accordingly. And if John's here or not here, that's going to be where we are.
As I said last time, I don't believe that this board can act on an application before hearing the testimony.
I, and I'm not agreeing or disagreeing. I'm just, I'm just... So that nobody has a big surprise short of weather, because at some point along the line, we're going to see something resembling winter. That if we get here next month and Mr. Milik is here and makes his presentation, the board has, and the public has, and Mr. McDonough is not here to revise, I don't know what the board will do at the end relative, assuming they get to that point, at the end of your client's testimony and you're on record.
Again, I would just say that traffic and engineering and architectural testimony as to emergency access and emergency response is part and parcel to the Section 36 variance. And that testimony would be a mandatory procedural due process requirement before a board can act, because a board has to listen to all the testimony. That would, that would be the fairness that I would be concerned about. This is not a bifurcated application. It's an application as it stands today, and that may change for a subdivision and a preliminary and final major site plan. If we eliminate the subdivision, then there would be nothing to vote on. But if we don't eliminate the subdivision, I believe it's crucial testimony to prove, that would, that would be required for this board to hear before, before voting.
Mr. Chairman, to answer a question I was asked before tonight's meeting, not today, but prior, again, what will the board do? The answer is, we'll see what happens when the application gets to the end of that piece.
Okay. Why, no, I thought you were gonna, you had a comment?
I was, but I don't need to anymore. But you, you're correct. I, I thought I had a conflict for the ninth, but I don't.
Okay. Perfect. Okay.
So based on our rules, Mr. Chairman?
We're done with applicants.
The appropriate motion is a motion to continue the application to Thursday, March 9th. Hang on, so I can make sure that my... Yes? And March, Thursday, March the 9th at 7 o'clock or soon thereafter, if the matter may be heard without further notice.
Okay.
Thank you very much for that.
So I made the motion. Mr. Peason seconded. All in favor? Or do we have to, we can do an affirmative, right?
All in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, if the board will wait a moment to let everybody go out, I believe Mr. Coys has an issue he wants to raise with the board, separate apart from his application.
Say a motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Then a motion to adjourn.
All right.
Well, we got to first, I think we got to cancel the meeting of the 23rd.
Well, that's part one, and then part two is an issue regarding massive...
Okay. So why don't we first have a motion to cancel the business meeting of February 23rd of this year?
February, February or March?
February 23rd. We have a business meeting.
March, March, you're here. You're committed to being here in March, so...
All right. Mrs. Scobbo made the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Peason seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. February 23rd, business meeting is canceled.
I'll be here anyway.
Mr. Coys?
I stalled enough for you, right? Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, in order for the Master Plan Subcommittee to move forward, the bylaws state that, that a chairman needs to be appointed by you. And the bylaws state that the chairman of the planning board cannot serve as a subcommittee person. And so there's two options in terms of Class 4 members. And so perhaps this was something that we didn't have in our minutes from the reorg meeting, but just would like to ask for some clarification on who you're appointing to be the chairman of the Master Plan Subcommittee.
It needs to be a Class 4 member?
Class 4.
Which...
You've appointed, right here, you've appointed two Class 4 members.
Yes.
One is Mr. Peason.
Yep.
The other is Mr. Delkor. So the call is... Who's ever's not here?
Considering the ma... Who's the alternative member?
On that?
On that? Yeah.
And she can as well, because she's taken...
Well, no, no, only, only because I worry about Mr. Delkor being able to get to a meeting in time, so... The benefits of being local. So Mr. Peason is hereby appointed chairman of the Master Plan Subcommittee. Congratulations.
Looking forward to working with him.
And he, and he will call the appropriate meetings at the appropriate time.
Well, since there's already like two, what, two fits, you might as well do it on Hoagland Court, one of your backyards.
Sure. With that, Mr. Chairman, appropriate motion to adjourn.
Okay. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned. See everyone? March 2nd?
I remind the board that we have two applications on March the 2nd.
At 7:00 p.m.
So to quote the chair normally, if any of you are not going to be able to make it, please advise.
That's right. Please call the planning office.
March 2nd?
Yep, March 2nd.